Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the work session in beautiful King William County. Chris?
Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Garber.
Here.
Mr. Moran.
Here.
Chairman Hodges.
Here. Has everyone reviewed the meeting agenda and have no changes? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any...
That's the amended one, right?
Yes, this one. Well, we don't really tell us when it was amended, but anyway, doesn't matter. Yeah, the amended one, and any further discussion?
Chris?
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski. Chairman Hodges.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. He was just a little...
All right, the first thing we have up is a public hearing on Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-three, CUP zero-one dash twenty-three Coho Club Incorporated. Ms. Grant? And I'll ask right off the bat, had there been any objections?
There hasn't. We've had a few people in the beginning inquire, but nobody had any objections to it.
This is all in private property, correct?
It is. So, the Coho Club, and they're represented by Mr. Bill Allen, who's also here tonight, they're requesting approval of a CUP to construct a twenty-three by twenty-four covered boathouse on their property at one at five forty Mount Olive Coho Grove. This would be in addition to an existing twenty-four by fifty boathouse. The body of water, it's a private non-title pond, so the core VMRC and the local wetlands board have no jurisdiction over it. It will not pose any risk to boating navigation. It can't be seen from the surrounding residence, other than the club's caretaker's home, they can see it, of course. It can be seen from the road from Mount Olive Coho. Article two of the ordinance also requires that boathouses be fitted with reflectors and lighting to make them visible at night, so... And I don't think that anybody else has access to the pond, except for the club.
Not legal.
The peace, the planning commission, at their April fourth meeting, they voted five to zero to recommend approval to the board with the following conditions, that the work would meet all requirements of the state and local agencies, and that all work be completed within two years of approval. And I do have a brief PowerPoint that will show the locations and everything. So that will show the existing, and there were the boat addition, the boat shed addition that's going to go. This is the drawing of what they were proposing to build. And they were able to start because they could do an uncovered pier or landing there without having to go through the BBD process. So to get started, they did start with that. That is where you could see it from the road.
Is this member ownership or single?
It's member only.
Not member ownership? Yes, okay. And no objection from your group? You said mine.
And he's here to answer any questions, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if I can.
Anybody had anything with Ms. Grant? Uh, Mr. Allen, would you like to say something? Not really, okay. Have y'all got questions, Mr. Allen?
Okay, just, I'll just say one, I couldn't help but miss the injunction order. And in it, it does say that it is titled, even though the waters are not navigable, so... I don't know, my experience, my experience with that is, if it's titled regardless of the debt, it would fall under, so...
Well, I did check with the MRC, they told me it was a non-title private pond, and they did give a letter that they have no jurisdiction over it, the same thing with the core, so with them telling me that it's a non-title private pond, that also leaves the local wetlands board out.
Yeah, it seems like this injunction was to eliminate some people that were using it, probably. And I guess the court determined that it was titled. And I don't know, I just had that question, that's all. I don't see anything wrong with it myself.
Mr. Allen did say at the planning commission meeting that they're trying to do this with the wider walkways to make it a little easier for the older members to access the boats and so forth, make it a little safer for them. And I believe he said there probably would be no more than five boats, is that correct?
There are three splits, and...
I'm ready to conduct the hearing.
All right.
I had one question, I think Stuart just brought up something that I didn't, we didn't catch, we didn't hear that planning commission either, but would there be any differences if they figured out it was titled, or, because it is titled, because like I said, we own land on it, and it goes up and down, and it's very titled, but I mean, does that make any difference?
Well, because they considered it private also, that was another thing.
It's private.
It's still an open pile private structure. If it was considered commercial, then all three agencies would have jurisdiction over it.
I just wanted to check, because I just, I'd never thought about that, Stuart said.
But if VMRC and the cores is not titled, then I'm good with that.
Yeah, those were their part.
Yes, sir.
There's a six-foot dam between Coho Creek and Coho Pond, it is not titled. We do occasionally, we raise the water levels up and down for Yankee purposes, but I can assure you, the pond is non-titled. I believe the reference in the court order...
To a creek, not the pond itself, right?
Before the dam was built, yeah, that Coho Creek went, you know, through that area, it was titled. Since the dam was built, the pond is not titled. And also, it's fresh water, obviously, the creek is fresh, but the pond is fresh.
So they lower and raise the water, I know it does go up and down, but so they do it manually, okay, that's fine.
All right, nothing further at this point. I'll open it for a public hearing, and Chris, can we read that? That document again?
Hi, my answer, public hearings, it's a policy of the board that its meetings be conducted with the highest degree of order and decorum. The board's integrity and dignity will be established and maintained at all times during the conduct of public business, and the board will permit no behavior which is not in keeping with this policy. Though the soliciting of funds from meeting attendees, the use of threatening or profane language, the failure to comply with time limits, violation of board rules, or other forms of disruptive conduct will not be tolerated. The chair will maintain proper order at all times during all meetings of the board and show effect the removal from any meeting of any person guilty of improper conduct if the offending party fails or refuses to cease such conduct. Speakers wishing to address the board shall clearly state their name and address their comments to the chair. Speakers are allowed one opportunity of three minutes and may not yield any portion of their time to another. Political campaigning, advertising of goods and services and the like are prohibited. No speaker is to engage in political statements, personal attacks upon members of the board, county employees or officials or any other person, use abusive language, discuss matters outside the purview of the board, or publicly discuss matters of board is solely considered in a closed meeting. Clearly state your position, give the facts to substantiate your position, and state the concerns you wish the board of supervisors to consider. If you have a written statement, handouts, or other supporting material, hand it to the clerk, do not hand materials to individual supervisors.
Thank you, and at this point, I'll open the public hearing. Everyone has three minutes. You speak on the public hearing matter of Resolution twenty-three days thirty-three. Anyone that wishes, come forward.
Well, I'm Joe Pierce on Second District, I'm joining Landowner. If we clarify that it is freshwater? The... It's a man-made pond, which, you know, the dam on one side and the other side is fresh, and I have no problem with it, but I just want to clarify to make sure that y'all know that it is a freshwater private pond.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. And remember, we have a motion at this point for Resolution twenty-three days thirty, we have adoption.
Second.
End of discussion. Chris?
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye. All right, first work session matter is ordinance zero-four days twenty-three R imposed property tax levies for calendar year twenty-twenty-three. Okay, I was wondering who?
We flipped the coin. Good evening.
You lost.
I won, I won. Ornet four dash twenty-three R is presented tonight for board approval for the property tax rate for the calendar year twenty-twenty-three. Recommended this evening is real estate property rate of fifty-eight cents per one hundred. Countywide, twenty-seven cents per one hundred, and school district, thirty-one cents per one hundred. Vehicle tax rate returned to three sixty-five per one hundred due to decreased vehicle values. Personal property tax rate, three sixty-five per one hundred, remains the same as calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Machinery and tools tax rate, two twenty-five per one hundred, remains the same as calendar year twenty-twenty-two. Staff recommends the approval of ordinance four dash twenty-three R.
Young man, any question? Well, does anybody want to explain the change from what was initially discussed?
I can talk about that.
Sure, yeah, okay, go ahead.
So...
You lost the point to us, and you...
Yeah, definitely. So, with the board's further instructions, the board had asked us to go back, look at our revenues, see, one, what we could do better for the split of the fifty-eight cents. So countywide, what we could, how we could reduce that and increase the schools, and then also then look at how that affected our revenue, how we could actually come up with some additional revenues to assist the schools with their expenditures, and this was the result.
And this is the best we could do, correct?
Yes, sir.
But this is much closer on a level to... What, I choose my words carefully here, true equalization?
But not equal.
Well, but...
Not totally.
As close as we can get it, without going into fractions, you know, instead of the, we are now seeing an equal amount or as close as we can practically achieve in West Point as we are in the county. Wanted to make that known and clear.
Okay, I was hoping we wouldn't go there, so... How does, first of all, I've heard this over and over again, this is mostly from you, Mr. Miskowski. Districts two through five, if these rates, or what we will use, according to the ancestry of what's been discussed up here, that will cost districts two through five more than the town of West Point. Am I mistaken in that? Mr. Ashcraft?
You, yes.
Right, okay. So...
I'm saying that that's, you're not correct, we're equalizing the rate to fifty-eight across the board. We're also rebalancing the rebalance so that the amount of tax relief is effectively equal for districts two through five and district one, that's all.
Somebody want to answer my question out there?
I, no.
We, with this, with this, with this, excuse me, with this proposal, we are using eight hundred thousand dollars, I think, of other taxes, which are spoken about in the split levy agreement, which we're going to use to make the county's budget whole, which... Six hundred thousand, which means districts two through five will pay a larger portion. Am I, am I correct? We had a discussion early.
Well, those tax, those taxes in general, yeah.
So, I don't, I don't get the argument about equalizing the rates, to begin with, everybody pays the same thing. That reassessment was done equally across the board from district one through five. And the town of West Point, they're raising their rate for five, about five cents. So we're going to drop what the original proposal was, I think it was thirty cents?
Thirty twenty-eight, yeah.
Thirty twenty-eight. So we're going to drop that three cents to make it twenty-seven, we've got to make up the difference in other taxes, which are spoken of in the split levy agreement. And Travis, I've heard you say that before, that if we use that funding for anything other than the schools, that districts two through five will pay more. So now we flipped it. I just, you know, either, somebody needs to explain it to me, so either we're paying more, or this is equalizing the town of West Point, I don't see where the town of West Point is paying at the other rate more than their fair share of taxes. Could somebody explain that to me?
You're asking the question out there, I wasn't quite sure who out there, anybody, the whole audience?
It can't be that, it just has to be staff, can't be anybody else.
Because we've heard it, everybody up here has heard it both ways. And it's come from a large part of it was Travis, and prior to this new rate, Travis always stood in the corner of the doctrine, the spirit of the agreement, that those taxes could not be used for anything other than the schools, now we are.
What can I say, I changed my mind.
So, are you saying that now it's okay, it's okay to use it?
I'm going to say what I said at the end of the last meeting.
Well...
I have spent more time than I probably should have had to. Trying to make it make sense, and it didn't land, and I made it the last meeting, I was still getting argued with about what the legislation says and doesn't say, and how, how we apply that.
And that argument came from me.
Right.
And now you're going in a different direction, so which way is it, is all I'm asking you.
So...
If district two through five is truly, by this, going to pay more, there's no way that I will support it.
That's not, well, look, I'm not going to go into detail anymore, I'm just going to say, that's not, that version of it is not necessarily, is flat-out not true. This does not mean that districts two through five are paying more. It flat out does not mean...
If those additional taxes are the counties to allocate to the schools, and we are using that to balance the government's, county government's budget, then that's two through fives revenue for the county. Not, not the town, what we're doing is, we're flipping the rate. Lowering it. And we're going to use eight, six hundred thousand dollars of those other taxes.
As, as was correctly pointed out in the last meeting, nothing in the legislation precludes that.
So, I was right?
Yes.
Okay, so...
They are using...
It's, 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 where am I wrong? We had a conversation today, and both of y'all told me that districts two through five would actually be paying more.
Those additional funds are generated in districts two through five.
Exactly.
So by the nature of those funds being generated, it's obviously a bigger number in two through five, yeah, that's correct.
But that's where they came from.
But that's not, that's not, right, 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 man, I'm not, I'm not getting into this again, I'm just not doing it, all right?
We're arguing the same...
I know, and I am so, so here's what I'm going to say, this is it in a nutshell, and this is the last word I'm going to say on this matter, until the end of time, it does not mean that districts two through five are paying more, it does mean district one is paying less. That makes sense?
District one is paying less. District one, same, same thing, so you just said that district one is paying less, so fair and equal, we should have kept the rates the way that they were.
Yeah.
Anyway, we still arguing the same thing, at this time, I normally don't do this, but I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance zero-four days twenty-three R, I'll second.
Now, we need to put more discussion, like I said, this is being used for the schools in districts two through five. We're using five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars to pay the additional amount to the school board from districts two through five, to give them what they need as well, except a menial amount like fourteen thousand dollars. So we're making their budget whole, given the teachers their raises, by doing this.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the teachers' raises are coming from the reserve fund that we are tapping into, it has nothing to do with this argument. Isn't that correct? The two hundred and some thousand dollars is coming from a reserve fund that we found that we do have access to, without him asking.
The five hundred and thirty-five thousand would not cover the entire, you'd have to take money from that reserve fund, which would, which would increase the appropriation.
Oh, right, 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 I'm getting the wrong numbers, right, right, right.
That would bring them to almost the amount needed with their five percent rate.
Yeah, that was the old amount, I'm sorry, that was the old, right, the new amount is one million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, so that's the amount that's almost what the schools asked for, right?
Yes.
So it wasn't, we did it just to, whatever the reason was to... And two through five isn't paying more, but West Point is paying less, but the funds came from two through five, and it's being used, a lot of it's being used to pay, right, this extra to finish our two through five school budget. For it, right? That's the only reason that I was going.
And you support that?
Yeah, only because it's doing that, because otherwise, the teachers weren't going to get their five to seven percent raise with our old budget amount.
So, the, the original proposal, how short were the schools? Five hundred and some thousand?
Yep.
Okay, so how short, short are they now?
Like fourteen thousand, isn't it? It's a menial less amount, they can change their budget a little bit and come up with that amount.
No, the schools would be, it'd be over three hundred thousand dollars.
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same number, only...
Their ask was one point...
I wanted to tell them, please.
By the way, five, oh, for a couple of... Thank you, Ms. Long, so we're, we're at eight, what's that, eight, nine, eight, so we're still three hundred thousand dollars short of their ask.
And they only, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I may, the only difference is, West Point is paying less with this proposal, that's, that's where I'm at. And we talk about fire, fairness, how is that paying?
Again, same discussion over and over again, and nobody's answering the question.
I, I've answered this question thirty times in the last three months, and I know I'm not, I'm not going to talk anymore.
Any further, gentlemen? Chris?
No.
Mr. Miskowski. Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Page is three, two. All right, the next item up is Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-four establishing health insurance plans to be offered to county employees, Nita MacIntyre.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
This is something that hasn't changed.
No retreats.
This is the Resolution twenty-three, twenty-three thirty-four, bringing to you and I to pass for the county's health insurance plan. The two plans that we offer are the same as they have been for the past several years, and fortunately, our rates are the same as they have been for the last two years.
That's not genuine.
I got some wood right here. Does anyone have any questions about our rates or...
Well, most people are saying theirs are going up, so...
Library board is, sir, library board is.
Chair, I'll move that we approve Resolution twenty-two thirty-four.
Twenty-three thirty-four.
Yeah, twenty-three thirty-four.
Any further, Chris?
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Chairman Hodges.
Aye. All right, see Resolution twenty-three days thirty-five approving a pay and classification salary adjustment plan for fiscal year twenty-four, Nita MacIntyre.
Gentlemen, we have previously discussed this earlier in the budget season, where we have adjusted to accommodate the positions, accommodate the increase for the starting pay for firefighters, and these need to be brought to you annually for your approval. The only positions that we added were the facilities director and the economic development director that were already previously discussed, as well as increasing the starting pay due to minimum wage fee increase for our bottom pay grade.
Approximately how many of the minimum wage employees are there?
There were, I believe, six employees that this affected.
Or does, and I know it's in here, but or does that put the deputies in relationship to the firefighter and rescue?
That, that begins them both at the same, their scales, they both start at forty-seven five. I apologize, but my chief got cut off, I believe the first couple levels, they mirror each other until you get to the higher where, where the duties differ pretty greatly between lieutenant at the fire department and lieutenant in the sheriff's department. But the, the beginning salary doesn't...
Any further?
I'll move adoption.
Second.
Chris?
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Garber.
Aye.
Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski. Chairman Hodges.
Aye.
Resolution, thank you, Ms. MacIntyre. Resolution twenty-three days thirty-six adopting fiscal year twenty-twenty-four through twenty-eight capital improvements plan as a long-range planning document, Ashburn.
On March thirteenth, the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four was presented. Included in the presentation was the capital improvement plan. Whole proposed capital improvement budget for FY twenty twenty-four is twelve million, three hundred fifteen, one hundred seventy-eight. Resolution twenty-three dash twenty, uh, thirty-six is presented tonight for board consideration fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight. Capital five-year improvement plan.
Any question?
Mister Chair, if I may, the, uh, sick room housing and equipment. That, I think, uh, King and Queen has expressed that they have no interest in, in any capital improvement, so that's all one hundred percent of us, or we. Calculating maybe fifty percent. What is that number?
The funding source right now that's in the budget is that they would support it fifty percent. If, if that's not a funding source for us, we would come back to the board and present to you. Um, if there would be additional funds from the general fund to make that happen.
Are, are they still saying that they may, or are they saying absolutely not? It seems like they wanna get out of.
I thought we were.
All of the commitments.
The actual words I heard were that there were no funds for any capital improvements. That means no to me. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mister Chairman, we, uh. We're hopeful not to make up the difference with general fund dollars. We would like to be able to think there could be some grants, uh, there could be some other. Other ways to pay for that.
I would be working, looking for grants. Yeah, I, I'm not paying King and Queen's part.
Sure.
I, on my book.
I understand. But it is a, I, I think it's becoming, uh. That particular issue is becoming greater every year, uh, as far as a need. Uh, that's why we do need to try to put together a package that. May not have any more, um, pressure on the general, on the general operation. But it is.
We're getting less support, is what I'm getting.
Oh, absolutely. But the need is becoming just greater at, at the facility itself, which, uh. Our. Our citizens are suffering when they, when the animals are brought in, or whatever the effect might be. From the lack of us having this, this room.
Well, they use it too. It, it's affecting their folks too.
Why, why, I understand. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing.
I'm just saying they're, they're backing out of everything. And it's not King William's deal, but anyway.
Are there any legal stipulations should King and Queen just back off completely? That we would be subject to, that you are aware of?
You mean the whole thing?
So the, so the agreement that they have. Is a fifty percent pay on capital, right? So has that agreement expired?
I thought it was coming close.
I didn't. I think it's always been assumed. I don't know that the operations side seems to have worked out pretty well. And we haven't really had too many major capital improvements at that facility. Uh, so I don't know when this issue is. You know, it's really surfaced. I know a few years ago I was told that it, uh, it was brought before this board. And it, and it never was gained approval by the board as a whole. So that's what kind of made the project, uh, go away at that time. But again, this has continued to be an ask for the, uh, from the director down there for the last few years and, uh.
Which fits a state mandate now, right?
Well.
A sick room.
I wouldn't call it a state mandate. It, it's something that the state supports. Uh, you have a lot of, uh, smaller, uh, uh, facilities over the state that may not be able to have this separation. I, I don't think there's any general rule that says that. Cats and dogs or sick cats and well cats can be in the same room. But it's been proven that, uh, if you can separate them, you can bring the others to, to greater health more quickly. And the other ones don't have a risk of getting, uh, sick, uh, more quickly.
Only thing is the argument there.
Yeah, I.
The argument is they agreed to. To support this in with us. And they should hold up there.
So we don't have a regional agreement with them like we have with the monkey regional library. We don't have an agreement with just us and King and Queen.
Yeah, oh yeah, we do. I'm just saying, I don't think the capital question has been brought up that often because we haven't had. Too many ads.
Right, I understand about.
The, the, the operation, the fifty-fifty operation is what, uh, is, is what we paid the most attention to.
Right, right. But I heard they weren't doing that either, so.
Mister Hodges will read what the language is.
In the agreement under capital improvement says the parties agree to share equally the costs of capital improvements, including but not limited. To expansion of the animal shelter facility. In order for capital improvement to occur, the county administrators of both King and Queen. And King William must agree on the need for the improvement and secure approval from their respective boards of supervisors.
There's a hangup.
And that's been done. The su, the county administrator has gone to the board. Their board has said no.
And no approval shall.
So.
So this, why do we even have it on you? It's, it's just a plan, correct?
Well, that's correct. But it, I guess I would just say, it's, you know, at some point, um. When something is necessary, regardless of how, of how the agreement rests. Do we have a, do we have a humane and an ethical responsibility to at least give some consideration to it?
Both jurisdictions. The last statement of that says no approval for such an improvement shall be withheld. If such improvement is required by federal or state mandates.
Which is not evidently, but I thought when, when Mrs., when Mrs. Betts.
There's, there's some type of VDAC.
I thought it was. Compliance, yeah, that's a word.
And it's. And it could be a civil fine, I.
Yeah, we've never, we've never, uh, I've, combined all of it, we've never been penalized for not having.
I've read that parts of it.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, then let her, but from the parts I've read, it basically they got some committee that could assess your. Amount of money that you owe for not being in compliance is the way I've read. And she can tell you more.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, the state law through VDEX requires that every animal shelter, public and private. In the state of Virginia have a sick isolation room. The area we have been using was thrown together at the last minute. Because the architect failed to give us a sick isolation room. And that room, the area we're using is not adequate, as it does not separate animals. Appropriately that have contagious diseases. The HVAC system is shared with healthy animal areas. And the room itself is a pass-through room to areas. Um, the room we're using was designed, designed as a puppy room. And right before we opened in two thousand nine, we had to. Uh, convert it into a sick area, which has never been adequate.
So is that state code, the one that you sent to us? And it does not really discuss fines, but only, uh, non-compliance fees that can be initiated by them, correct?
Yes, upon inspection by, um, the state, if they find. They have never inspected while our sick room has been in use, by the way. But if they were to come in and find, uh, dogs with parvo. That are only separated by three feet from another dog. Or cats with upper respiratory who have a, uh, sneeze spray field of six feet. And they're only separated by three feet from other animals, then they're gonna find it inadequate. And it is inadequate because we struggle to keep these animals, um, isolated and. Not contaminating other animals.
You may not can answer this, but who would not be in compliance? Just King William County or King and Queen too?
No, it would be both counties.
I mean, I'm, I'm good heading on there. O- obviously it's a need, you know, we're, we're, I was gonna say we're making it work, but we're not really making it work. We've got a room that we throw sick animals in and hope for the best, so. I mean, there, there's, there's a discussion certainly that we need to have with King and Queen about. You know, the continuance of this agreement and what it means when our capital needs, I mean. The building at this point in time is approaching fifteen years old. We've already had some maintenance needs over there. We've got other needs we gotta keep up on, that they've got to acknowledge the capital's gonna come up and, and they need to, you know, be planning for those things. Um, but I think, you know, if we can, if we can get it done. Even if, you know, we can't bring them dragging, you know, dragging them along, we can find other ways to make up the, the difference. Uh, I, I would support getting it done.
Any further?
I support it too, actually. It was just. You know, what, what we had heard earlier about their lack of interest in it.
Anyone else?
I was just curious, how much, again, does King and Queen support the other part, not the capital, but the, the regular?
Fifty percent of the operating expenses, cause they, they send a three percent admin fee to the town to go to the general fund for. For the accounts payable.
That's what I mean, what is it? How much is it?
Um, how much is the three percent?
No, the whole thing.
Uh, I believe it's two thirteen is what they ask us this year. I can tell you really quick.
Cause like I said, what we hear from them, they're not gonna help us with that. Why don't we just, they wanna get out of the library. It seems like they wanna get out early. Why don't we just? Let them get out and then just take care of it ourselves. And we don't have to take care of their animals either, because. They're not paying for them anyway. Run this bet said that they give way more from King and Queen than we put in, and we have to pay for them. They don't pay half. Isn't that right, Miss Betts? You may know she's gone. Yeah, cause she told me that, I mean, when they had that, that.
Mister Greenwood, I think they've been pretty consistent in meeting their operations, uh. Uh, proceedings. It may not always come in, you know, at the right of July second, but I.
Right, but she was saying more animals come from King and Queen, so.
Yeah.
Cause she said that raid they had, most, all of them came from King and Queens. I know they couldn't have covered all of them, but anyway.
No, I don't, I don't know that it's, it's not measured that way, uh, either by the number of animals that you burn in.
No, we, uh, so each month we run a report of our operating spend. We, we spend a bill between Queen and their house.
So it fluctuates.
Yeah.
And they've never missed it.
No, no.
No, you said it, they've always paid sometimes late. All right, I think we have a motion in a second now. Any further? Chris?
Motion, motion to approve resolution twenty-three thirty-six.
Mister Garber.
Hi.
Mister Moore.
Hi.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi. All right, our next item is resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven adopting the fiscal year twenty-four budget, Natasha Moore.
Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven is presented tonight for board consideration to adopt the proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget. Modifications to the proposal from March thirteenth include revenue adjustments to the split levy. The, to the split of real tax property levy, changing the split from thirty cents per one hundred countywide. And twenty-nine cents per one hundred school district to twenty-seven per one hundred to, and thirty-one. Per one hundred school district. I'm sorry, I made a mistake on that. It was, that was not the split, it was twenty-eight, sorry. This reduced the overall revenues for real estate. To absorb these, this revenue reduction, we propose to utilize funds from the EMS revenue recovery. And utilities fund to reimburse the general fund. EMS revenue recovery fund will offset the general fund expenses for EMS salaries. And utilities fund will offset the general fund expenses for administration of utilities such as accounts payable, accounts receivable and payable. The expenditures modifications include increased to commissioner revenue salary and travel education expenses. Reduction to the county administration departmental expenses and general fund contingency. And an increase to the school's annual appropriation. That recommends approval of resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
Any questions? Mister Chairman, I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
I'll say.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, let me ask since I've got Stacy here. How, how, all right, how close is this getting? Just a question. Is there sufficient revenue for you guys to provide? The five percent increase?
Yes.
Any further?
I don't know, something was told in confidence in the room, but I don't know if we can say it out here for Ms. Brown. You were saying that. From the figures we were looking at, it looks like they're gonna be able to get more than the five percent. More in between the five to seven, like we said when we looked at the numbers. Has that changed again, or is it?
I'm not, but I know, uh, no, you know.
Any further? Chris?
Mister Moore.
Nice.
Mister Miskowski.
Hi.
Mister Greenwood.
Hi.
Mister Garber.
Nice.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
All right, our next item up is resolution twenty-three days thirty-eight appropriating funds for the fiscal year twenty-four budget, Natasha Moore.
For the board's consideration, resolution twenty-three dash thirty-eight is presented for approval of appropriation of funds from the, for the FY twenty twenty-four budget.
Move adoption, Mister Chair.
Second.
Discussion.
It's just the appropriation resolution. I agree.
Mister Miskowski. Mister Greenwood. Mister Garber.
Nice.
Mister Moore.
It's done, nothing I can do about it. Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
All right, our next item is G quarterly grant update. Need a Mac and his. You had the easiest job.
I have the most non-controversial topics tonight. Um, this is just a, a new, uh, initiative that the trash crap asked that I need as, as reporting to y'all on some grants that we have. We, um, working with grants over six million dollars. Obviously, five, five million, uh, plus is for the broadband initiative. But there's still a significant amount of grant money that we use to supplement, um, many necessary things. We use it for everything from law enforcement to firefighting equipment to tourism and art. Um, couple of the highlights, the, uh, school resource officer program this year, uh, expanded to put an officer in every school. We're hoping that we receive the same funding next year. Um, victim witness program support, uh, and the VDOT programs that were used by Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Um, we have one this year for materials to support BJ triple C A, um, having computers and other equipment for their kids. Uh, to take their classes and education. As well as Versa, our risk management company, um, provides us with a grant every year that has covered this past year, the, um. First aid kit, handicap parking signs, the things that really add up that we don't necessarily try to take out of general fund dollars. Um, and CEQ, which provides us with a litter grant that we share with West Point that helps cover a portion of the VISA. Site renovations, um, near the high school, as well as picking up track, um, in addition to what VDOT does to, to beautify our town. There was a grant summary that was listed included in your pocket. If anyone has any questions.
I'm really a question, sure. Isn't it good, SRO good for two more years? Something like that.
Experience, yes, you have to ask whatever you.
General summary's always subject to.
I thought they guaranteed three, but sure for nothing.
Hopefully I'll add to this next quarter. Hopefully we'll have a few more. Um, there's a lot of grants that open up this time of year that are annual grants. Um, and a lot of these run on the fiscal year.
And Ms. Mackenzie, just because there are gonna be people reviewing this, the administrative body telecommunications grant. Half of that fee is from DHCD through that grant and we pay the other half. So just for clarification, it's not all counting. Kind of is, but it's kind enough.
Thanks for the information.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and is the next one on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering. All right, next item is H all points broadband update, um, Ames senior vice president.
All right, thank you. I've. I muted myself and I'm gonna share my screen. Great. Uh, could everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for an opportunity to provide a quick update. I was here a couple of months ago. Uh, I've been asked to return, uh, tonight and more frequently to provide updates and give you all an opportunity for questions. Um, start with a quick reminder. The broadband grant program through the Virginia telecommunications initiative. Is a project that's going to make fiber broadband accessible to two thousand two hundred and thirty-six unserved locations in the county. Uh, by February of twenty twenty-four, the network that we're building. And all points is putting in about a hundred and ninety miles of fiber. Uh, Dominion Energy Virginia is constructing, uh, some middle mile fiber in accordance with their, uh, regulation. And at the end of the day, we're gonna have a network that is scalable to ten by ten gigabits to each location. So. You've all heard of gigabit broadband. Uh, and gigabit is what will sell on day one, but, uh, it's an investment for the next generation. Or to be able to scale up to ten gigabits in each direction. Um, a quick, another quick reminder on the funding. Uh, roughly for about every dollar that King William is putting into the project, there's an additional six coming in. Uh, through the Virginia telecommunications initiative or investments by Dominion or All Points Broadband. Uh, our other electric utility partner is Rappahannock Electric Co-op. Uh, they are a co-op and they participate differently than Dominion, but are a key partner in this project. Um, as I mentioned last time, we have brought on the Timmons Group, uh, well-known engineering firm. Uh, here in Virginia, they are our lead, uh, primary skilled vendor. Uh, they've been doing a lot of work in King William. So a couple of the key dependencies, uh, remain consistent, uh, as always until we finish. Number one is getting the middle mile fiber capacity in place. This, uh, allows us to attach. Our last mile fiber, uh, between a home and the global internet. So we need that middle mile fiber to be built and installed. Uh, number two is the utility make ready process. So for every single pole that we attach to. Uh, we need to make sure that our fiber is going to be high enough above the ground between the two poles. To meet the national electric safety code. So, uh, we've gone through that process on the, the pole fielding. We've identified. Exactly where we want to attach, uh, the engineering firms for all points and the electric utilities have gone back and forth and we've submitted. Uh, about four thousand pole attachment, uh, applications so far. Let's. Think about all that we'll need. So, uh, a great milestone that we have recently achieved in the utility make ready process. And the next step on that is gonna be the utility make ready construction. So you'll see crews out there. Uh, replacing poles if necessary or upgrading them if necessary or determining that a pole is sufficient where we want to attach. Number three in the key dependencies is we want a significant queue of constructible. Fiber miles to hand off to our, uh, fiber contractors. So. They wanna come in and they wanna get a lot of miles in their queue. That have been permitted, that the poles have been made ready and they can just release their construction teams. Uh, they don't wanna wait for permits or easements or pole make ready. They want all that done so they can move. Uh, really rock and roll through the fiber attachment process. So we're working up. Um, to have almost all of those, those miles ready so that we can hand over to the construction crews later this year. And they're gonna build miles a whole lot faster than we had originally anticipated. Right now, we've completed our design, construction writeouts. Uh, like I said, we've submitted our pole attachment applications. Uh, working through the permitting process with railroads and VDOT where applicable. And we are going through the site acquisition process for finding, uh, where our network cabinets. So the little. Uh, they're like a, a mini fridge sized device that'll be on the side of the road. Uh, they need power and connection to our fiber and we're, we're selecting those sites now. Um, also our OSP which stands for outside plant. Uh, materials, so fiber electronics, all of the connectors, all of the devices that we need. All those inventory levels are consistent with the plan. Uh, I know there's been a lot of worry in the past about supply chain management, but, uh, the materials, uh. We've got them all, uh, going according to plan so far. For the, the two reservations that we're building on, we're working closely with the tribal leaders and applicable federal agencies to make sure that we're meeting all of the. Archaeological, environmental requirements. Uh, if you recall, in the Pumukki tribe, uh, reservation, we were awarded an NTIA grant. There's some strings attached to that. We're, we're working on that with the tribe, uh, and with Dominion Energy as needed. We have also been looking at, uh, locations or areas that may have been beyond, beyond the original Beatty grant project. Uh, such as where. Another internet service provider had defaulted on their federal broadband grant. Uh, we're gonna include those locations in our all points grant and as we find more locations, uh, we're gonna add them to this project. As you all know, the original grant project is kind of set in stone and we can't use that grant money to go to additional locations, but. Yeah, in the future, we will be able to expand to unserved locations and I, I have a slide about that coming up. A quick reminder about our progress with respect to the Beatty grant. Uh, we only report milestones and seek remittances, uh, which they call re- reimbursements. Uh, that's earned in arrears, so we don't have any grant money, uh, distributed to all points, uh, before we actually achieve a milestone. And we have to demonstrate that to the county and to DHCD and be approved before we receive any grant funding. So a quick, uh, remainder on the timeline. In Q one, uh, we began our utility pole, uh, attachment application process. Uh, the Rappahannock Electric Co-op Utility Fiber Network has construction ongoing. In the second quarter, we expect to complete our first milestone for the DHCD grant. Uh, and Dominion Energy's middle mile fiber construction will be, uh, released to construction. In Q three, you're gonna see a lot more of the utility pole make ready construction going on. And then in Q four, the last five, last mile fiber construction will begin. Yeah, by Q one of twenty twenty-four, we'll be substantially complete with the entire network. Uh, with customer installations ongoing and, and we file a Beatty grant closeout report. For the next twelve months after that, um, all of the locations will have grant enabled benefits. Um, and then after Q one of twenty twenty-five. Obviously, locations can sign up, uh, as they wish, uh, as the project continues. So. Just because the grant program ends, it does not mean that people can't sign up. Um, many folks have early termination fees on their existing satellite service or cellphone service. Uh, so we know that there's gonna be a little bit of a time period between when they could sign up and when they actually do. So. Uh, we extended all those benefits for an additional year and obviously folks can sign up well into the future. A couple of other reminders here, uh, even if a location is not part of the Beatty grant. Uh, folks should go to affordableconnectivity.gov and find out if they are eligible for a thirty dollar per month discount. Um, many homes, you know, they can apply this to their internet connection or even to their cellphone connection. Um, it's. It's a program that is up and running right now and a lot of people are eligible and there's not a lot of take rates on this, uh, in Virginia. So. Would strongly encourage people to go to affordableconnectivity.gov. Uh, we'll have this link on our website as well. For the all points project, we want people to go to APBfiber.com. Uh, right now you can sign up and confirm whether or not you're in the project. There's no commitment. Uh, you don't actually have to sign up to be included in the project. If you're one of those twenty-two hundred and thirty-six homes, uh, you're in here. Whether you like it or not, uh, and you can sign up for service and we'll notify you. Uh, by email, not ninety days in advance of when you can actually pay for your installation and your service. Uh, if you don't happen to sign up on the website, you're gonna get, uh, four or five mailers. You'll see yard signs. So. Uh, strongly encouraged to go to the website, APBFiber.com. It's not, not totally required and I would say that King William. Uh, is doing a good job of getting the word out. More than thirty percent of all the locations in the project have already pre-registered. Excuse me. Uh, when it comes to actually notifying customers. Uh, we break it down, break the project down into fiber service areas. So a couple hundred. Locations in each FSA. Uh. There's not a specific area of the county where we have to start first. We'll start based on the optimal construction and the most number of constructible fiber miles within one fiber service areas. Uh. Whichever one has the most constructible miles, the earliest will begin construction. Uh, and then that entire FSA will have service all at once and all the customers in there can begin signing up at the same time. But again, we won't notify people until about ninety days in advance of that service. So I mentioned earlier, there may be some remaining eligible locations. Um. Outside of the FY twenty-two Beatty project. This could be a number of reasons, you know, one is that the, the data on broadband ability, availability mapping is improving. Uh, it certainly has improved since when we initially submitted this grant. It's not perfect. Um, and it gets better every month, but as more locations are found to be unserved. Uh, we wanna find a solution for them as the county's partner. So there's three general options. One is that all points just invest in the network directly to those locations without any. Uh, grant from the, the state or any subsidy from the county or the federal government. Uh, number two is a program called the line extension customer assistance program. Uh, acronym is LECAP. This would be for single locations with a long driveway, uh, that meet eligibility requirements for the DHCD program. Uh, we would point those homeowners in the right direction, help them with that process. Whether or not that's through all points or through Breeze Line, uh, there's a, a specific program for isolated unserved locations. The third option would be, uh, with no additional commitment from the county. Uh, to go after an FY twenty-four Beatty grant. We haven't yet come to that point, but, uh, if we do, we'll, we'll bring that up to the county, uh, well in advance of the grant application submission. So how can you help? Uh, send folks to APBFiber.com. Uh, they'll take a survey, answer a couple of questions. If they're already inside the project, they'll get the, the good news. Uh, you can sign up and if they're outside of the project, we'll ask them about their current serviceability. We use those responses to determine which one of number one, two or three, uh, we can do to get them some service in the future. And I would assume that the Federal Communication Commission's broadband mapping data is getting better, but it's not perfect. So. If you see that your house is, uh, served according to the FCC map and that's not true. There's a very easy button to click on their website to challenge the, the statement that your location has service. Uh, if anyone has questions about that, uh, I'd be happy to walk them through that challenge process. Here's what the, the website looks like. If you go to APBFiber.com, you'll put in your, your address, uh, you'll click the button, check address. And for right now, King William residents will see a notification on the left-hand side that says you are inside of a planned service area. And services will be available to you soon. If you haven't already pre-registered, please provide your name, uh, your email. Any additional comments you want and then click go to survey. Uh, and that will pre-register you for notifications which you can opt out of if you want. Um, and if you're outside of the planned service area, you'll get a slightly different cer- set of survey questions. Uh, but, uh, our focus is getting first all the twenty-two hundred and thirty-six locations in the grant served. And then, uh, if we identify other locations that are unserved that. Were, were technically served, uh, at the time of the grant application, then we'll come and find a way to get you broadband as well. Uh, we're committed to universal broadband. The, uh, the website is the easiest way to provide that information to us. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions.
Yeah, you ain't got any?
Sure, I was waiting on you.
It didn't, it didn't go.
Tom, Tom Edmoren, uh, could you? Uh. Yes or no, the activity that we're seeing, especially on Route thirty, it's been a lot of activity, a lot of spools are turning. Is that part of your program?
Uh, it may be part of the middle mile, but it, it's not, we're not in the last mile construction yet, but there's a lot of middle mile activity. That's going on in support of the project. Um. We don't typically find out about that until later on in the process, but I, I believe that that is part of the middle mile section of this.
I, I agree. Asked the question kind of wrong, I agree. But I was hoping that they would keep you at least abreast of there is activity. So it's giving citizens a level of confidence that things are actually happening.
Yes, it's, it's not, um, we split between the last mile and the middle mile between all points and the electric utility providers. So it. It's probably their construction. I know that it's not all points, but it's in support of the project.
Okay, thank you.
There are two sets of today. What's two sets working down on?
Oh, yeah, it's everywhere.
Anybody have a question?
Yeah. I was just wondering, like Ed said, I mean, Rappahannock Electric's got wires going up on all the poles too, but you were saying there are certain grids or certain areas. Where I guess that main wire is coming up first and you're not gonna turn everybody on until that whole grid. Is ready, but do you have, I guess what we're really interested in is where are these grids and what grid's gonna be first and. And you said which one ever makes the most, I guess, sense for the most people to be turned on at one time, but do you have any idea where that is?
Well, I know with the, the breakdown of the different fiber service areas, uh. We know that be, based on the design. I don't know exactly which one will be first in the construction queue until we get further along. In the, the make ready construction process. So. Um, that's one of the three dependencies that we need in place. Right now you're seeing a lot of the middle mile fiber being installed. Number two is having the make ready construction done. And so while it's. Uh, similar looking crews with bucket trucks and they're working on poles, uh, for us, for the all points section. Um. We, we haven't started our fiber construction yet and, uh. Uh, we won't, we won't know exactly which fiber service area goes first until we're. You know, right before that package is released to construction. And I, I know that is a, uh, it's a tough answer and it's not that I know and I can't tell you. It's, we don't know until right at that moment either. So.
Right. That's why I passed what I was asking. As you said, all two thousand two hundred and thirty-six customers are supposed to be turned on by February twenty twenty-four and they all. Each group has to have ninety days notice and that's three months and this is already middle of May. Uh, seems like somebody should be starting to get some kind of notices, but. Yeah, I don't know.
Uh, all of those, those fiber service areas, they will get notices about ninety days in advance of when they can sign up. Not ninety days advanced notice of when the construction is starting.
Okay, I mean, I said that's still confusing too, cause I went on that website too and I can never find anything and I'm on there and my parents are on there, all my friends are on there and you can't find anything in there. So.
Help me understand that statement you just made. So what, what's chicken and what's egg there? When you can sign up or when construction begins? Because. The way I understood that comment just now gives, gives me even more pause as to, as to why we're not seeing more activity on, on, on that front if. Cause I would assume that. If, because I would assume that when you start signing up would occur before you start building, or do, is that somehow backwards?
Right. I mean, depending on the size of the fiber service area, the construction may start within that 90 day period. So you're right, if it's a smaller fiber service area, you're going to get the notice to sign up about the same time that construction starts. But if, you know, for a much larger fiber service area, the construction will probably start, you know, maybe a month before you get the notice that you can sign up.
So one other thing that struck me in the presentation is this this projected completion date has has been a moving target the last couple of times we've gotten together. It had initially been end of, oh, the calendar year 2023. Then it went to August 2023. Now it is February. Then it went back to the end of the calendar year. Now we're in August. So that's four different. Yeah, three different completions, four different, on four different occasions. Do we have a high level of confidence in this window right now?
The grant application has always been for a February 2024 completion date. But there was a paperwork issue that we had to get over that I think had it at August of 2023.
Okay, so. What?
But this, the February 2024.
We're getting very high confidence. Or grant applications for a second. What is an actual date that all points is confident that we would have substantial completion of the project?
February 2020, February 2024.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, Travis just asked a question about the time for completion.
Anyone else?
That's correct. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next item up is Board of Supervisors request. If you all have anything from the administration before we do that. All right, and Stephen, I think you're up. Don't want me first, but anyway, he said, I'm not as clear on all this as a big bucket of mud. But like Travis was saying, the dates are all over the place. They're still 90 days. The website's crap. I mean, do we not have any kind of, are there any kind of penalties? I mean, it seems like when I worked for VDOT, if you didn't meet a deadline, there was a thousand dollars a day penalty. I mean, but I guess since these are grants, there's no penalty, there's no incentive for them to work any faster, meet these deadlines or come up like that. What I was hoping for was letting people know what section's going to be, some when. Now we still, all we know is everybody's going to be there by February 2024. I mean, everybody can't be all turned on on February 2024.
That's what he said. Said that's the FSA's come along, they'll fire people up.
He just told Travis, that's what he did. He said, what date was he really confident that everybody would be on? He said, February 2024. Isn't that what he said, Travis?
Well, that's the substantial completion. So there's there's variables within that. There's still, there's still. Unlike you, we're we're far enough along in this project at this point. I thought we had a bit more detail.
I thought somebody would be on.
But et cetera is happening because.
Well, as he said, the the contractual date, according to the award, was originally February 24. They they made some mistakes in their predictions and tried to catch up, but they never could. At the conference I was at last week, they're everyone, all of the providers, all of the installers. They're they're facing a significant labor shortage, like everyone else in this country. And fiber deployment is no, no different.
That's fine. I just don't want to be so, I don't know. They're holding everything still so close to the vest that I think they could probably be a little more forthcoming.
I think they were overly optimistic. And then you have the other piece of the puzzle is Breeze Line and their Art Off area. And that's something we've been pressing, personally, I've been pressing them on is for updates, routine updates. We'll see them next next week at the VCTA Conference in Richmond. So we'll press more as to what their timelines are. They did tell everybody that they were doing walkouts. They did get back with Mr. Greenwood's situation. Still assessing, I think, as Mr. Ennis alluded, that there are some gray areas that got dropped when they were doing their walkouts and planning that they're going to be catching up on. And not that it's important at this juncture, but there are at least two to three other major programs, be broadband equity access, broadband equity access and deployment program, let's say, so sixty five billion dollar program managed by NTIA, which was going to be a follow on to a lot of these programs. So King William is going to be able to take advantage of a lot of these grants and and funding programs to continue building where we, where we hope, hopefully, it's not going to be that bad.
Okay, that's all those requests. Maybe like you said, go into maybe.
It's it's frustrating.
Yeah.
To to not be able to call up somebody and.
Okay. I didn't quite go in secretly, it's important information.
His answer.
And you, I figured it would be up on.
Uh, no, I mean, look, at this point in time, now that we've got the budget done, this this is is 1A, AAAA for me, is making sure that, you know, Dominion looks like they're on the ball. You know, we you see stuff going on in the Rappahannock Service Area. So I want to make sure that all points is also equally on the ball. I know they have a lot of irons in the fire. I do not want to be, I don't want to not be the squeaky wheel. I want to be a very squeaky wheel so that we get this, get this thing done and done on time.
Step in, but we, are you going to join the the DHCD conference next week as well? I'm going to physically go to the DHCD, which administers the VADI program next week. And I hope to have an opportunity to ask some serious questions about what are they seeing on on other contracts, other VADI programs, and hold them eye to eye. We'll see. Report back on the 20th.
Thank you.
I'm curious, since you two know all this stuff, on other counties that have already done before we have, have you heard?
We're supposed to be the their first.
We're the first.
Okay, never mind.
I think we were the second group that signed up after the Northern Act. It should be.
They've got Hanover, Culpeper.
The King and Queen, whose project is already complete, they use their already longtime partner in.
River Street.
River Street or Game Street, something, whichever they're, whoever they've been partnering with for a long time. Just curious, that project's already done.
They paid a lot more for theirs.
Right.
They started earlier too.
Never the year before.
Yeah.
We had the monkey net.
Cool. That's right.
I haven't heard of that in a while.
Sure. This has nothing to do with broadband. I'd like to get an update on what's going on. I know Clyde Christman stepped up to the plate for the landing on off of the Dad and his Mill Road. I think it's Landing Road that King William County owns. I'm just wondering what the possibilities are. I know he's been working on it. I haven't actually talked to him. I think he's been maybe communication with y'all.
We've had several discussions, but he's been tracking down a couple of other leads with grants. With grants and with the improvement of our opportunities to improve, say, Zoo or State Forest.
Is it, is it, is it still a reason why it's barricaded?
The county put barricades.
I know that, but I mean, either we're going to use it or we're not. I still have people ask me, why is it, you know, why is it barricaded? I understand originally it was because of maybe neighbors adjoining it or complaining.
But what was told to me why that happened was that it was just being trashed on the weekends. We weren't being able to enforce property maintenance on it. But.
Which, which, if we, if we improve it at all and open it up, that that problem's going to arise all over again. Because it is remote. But at any rate, that that's all, I just like some information that we're looking at doing anything or maybe reach out to him.
All right, it's a great place to hang out. We can allude to 40 years ago.
Forty?
I've really had nothing to share. I, I'm going to try to put together this week a trip report from my event last week. It was, I won't say it was eye opening, but there are dozens, if not hundreds, of different programs around 50 states. People have their own challenges in their, in their state, their counties, a lot of similarities. But I've told several people, especially those on the on the panel I was on, is that if you look at it relatively speaking, King William is extremely fortunate that we have four ISPs inside the county doing business of some sorts, or soon will be doing business. So a little patience, it's it's difficult. It's been a long four years. It's not that long, two years since we got the All Points, but we've got Sagr, we've got Breeze Line, we've got Cox in West Point, and soon have All Points. And there's very few that are that far along with so little spent towards it so far.
Well, that just brings us up one point for me. And I'd like to thank Mr. Edmoren and Mr. Travis Miskowski. I think y'all probably, I know others helped, but y'all led the battle in in that seeking out, running down folks, whatever needed to be done. And it's come along a long ways. I'm very impressed.
I remember organizing that town hall in the hospital room because we just had Claire.
And the only other thing, you know, we're in the crazy seat. A question from the citizens, how many firefighters EMS do we have left from the last academy? I'm told one. Only lost. And how that can get turned around. I was told, lost everyone but one. Okay, thank you. And with that, that's all I have. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to convene a closed meeting in accordance with Section 2.2, Drafts 371183 of the Code of Virginia regarding the acquisition of real property for a public purpose because discussion in an open meeting may adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board.
For the discussion, Chris.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moren.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
All right.
Be back in a little bit. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting back to order.
Mr. Chair, I move that we reconvene and open the session in a second.
Chris.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moren.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood. Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman, that's our one second.
Chris.
Mr. Moren.
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski.
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
Chairman, adjournments.
Second.
Mr. Miskowski.
That's a discussion.
Yeah, discussion on about do adjourn.
Mr. Greenwood.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Moren.
Hi.
Chairman Hodges.
Hi.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
Chair, what does that mean?
I don't know.
No, 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 rabbit rules, and I've said this before.